Well, you're here to.
You can do it now. Court will come to order. It is Wednesday, August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It's two o'clock in the afternoon and the Kirk County Commissioners' Court is in session for a workshop, budget workshop. And I believe you passed out the latest iteration.
Latest.
And let me just start by saying, I'm really worried about spending this much of our fund balance. It scares me. And it's, I think it was a third, we're up, well, maybe forty percent of our fund balance is being spent and we're not going to be able to replenish it. And I don't know what's, what's gonna happen. I know nobody wants to talk about raising tax rates, but I'm, I'm afraid that this is gonna catch us next year and the year after and potentially render the county insolvent, meaning bankruptcy. I'm that, I'm that scared about it. So, I'll offer that up for what it's worth. And I think the, this August thirteenth version, we have an increase in the budget for the appraisal district. We added the IT intern and about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar contingency for sheriff vehicles. And new, new Cade Loop Bridge is at one point four approximately.
Ballpark.
So it's up a little bit. And I still left the property tax rate at the forty-two, thirty-three, which was what it was this past year. That's kind of where we are. Any input?
A couple of, couple of, well, at least one quick thing. On the, on the federal funds, I know that's increased to five point eight five five, right? And, and I understand why that was raised completely.
It also has, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It also has some of the rest of the ARPA new first experience in it.
Correct.
And Corey added about, I think it's gonna be about eighty-five thousand dollars that's left over from the current year that we need to spend in next year if it all just goes sixty-five.
Okay.
So that's part of that increase also.
Okay. I know that, that's a big concern because that's, that's a large number that's, that we're, we're gonna have to spend.
Well, my concern is.
Potentially.
Not big enough, but right.
I think it's gonna be way too much. And, and, and my reasoning behind that is because, you know, we're having a more or less front load, the way that we're doing this on that, on that Cade Loop Bridge, and that's one point one or one point?
One point four.
Okay, well, the one point four includes an additional four hundred thousand for engineering that's already been done. And, and I talked to Charlie and you aren't aware of this yet, because I didn't, I couldn't get to any of you, but on this topic, because it was late that I talked to him. But he is finally getting them to accept his engineering. They were not recognizing his engineering stamp on this for the engineering work he's already done.
FEMA?
Yes. And, and apparently they are now. And so that, that, that number, he's saying leave it at that number just for that purpose, because there's too many unknowns about that bridge. But they told us clearly in here that if it costs more, they'll, they'll cover, they'll cover it. If the bridge costs more than what they're, they're thinking. But we're thinking that, that the bridge, for them to do what needs to be done, they were still looking towards a replacement, even at that figure they were putting in there. And we're looking at getting some cranes in there and lifting it up and shifting it that might run less than five hundred thousand dollars. And so there's, I'm just, my point is, there's a lot of unknowns with this that looks like we're going to probably not be near that number at the end of the day. And even if we are, the money should be in our account to fund it with the methods that FEMA is going to, to fund this. Does that make sense? Or no? I'm, I'm looking at your face and it's like, yeah, I'm confused though.
What you're saying makes sense. Keep in mind this bridge is shifted from one point, from six point two down to one point one, back up to one point four, back down to one point one, and now we don't think it's gonna be that much, but we're really not sure and it's changing.
I get it.
This is one of the projects that we have. There's other projects out there. There's three roads and Kelly, we may have nothing on the cost of those other three roads that are just kind of junior with an amount. So, so I don't know what that number is. It could be too high, it could be too low. So let's talk a little bit about if it's too low. We can't come back last year. It's not unforeseen. It's not, I guess it's kind of unknown at this point. Will it qualify for a reason for us to have to amend the budget in order to get whatever bits that may be there? And then if we cross that hurdle, how are we gonna pay for it? That means even more money coming in.
Right. And that also includes five hundred thousand for the temporary bridge that, that.
That's in here.
Right. That's what I'm saying. And so, and so you're looking at about two point one million total that we, we know that, that is, is going to be already on the high side. Because you've got the one point two, plus you've got the, the additional four hundred thousand, plus additional five hundred thousand. And so you're gonna be, you're gonna be over two million that they're looking at on that. That, 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 there will be some expense. I'm not saying that.
Right.
At all.
And I've only got one point nine in here right now. We've got one point four for the Cade Loop Bridge and then the five hundred thousand. So there's only one point nine in the amount that you're looking at.
Well, you were adding four hundred thousand to a one point one two, so, that they originally gave us.
I made the one point one be one point four, sorry.
But their original figure was one point one seven or one point one two? And then they added an additional.
One point one seven two.
Right. And then they, then they added an additional four hundred thousand.
They went up to one point four. Yeah, they didn't have a discount to one point four.
Okay. But I already know that number will be brought down. Now, we still, I'm comfortable leaving that in there for now because they are talking about the what ifs, you know? But their what ifs really are gonna even be lower if we, if we're doing what we're saying we're gonna do and we're gonna lift it and shift it. It, it won't cost near that to do that. And the engineering is already done to be able to do that and certified. And so we just need them to accept that certification and, and it looks like they're going to because Charlie is a engineer. And so when you take that and then the five hundred and that money's front loaded, I realize we may have all that money going out, but it'll be coming right back in. It's not the two or three year waiting period, that's my point, that, that we're worried about.
That's not been our experience. I hope it's.
No, it hasn't been in the past. I agree with you.
I agree it's not been our experience.
Yes, ma'am, and I agree with you. But, but, but there, everything that we're doing right now has been a different experience with them. And it's been a better experience, right? So.
I'd, I'd like to ask one question. Maybe Kelly is the right person to ask, but I always thought that TaxDOT covered ninety percent of the cost when it comes to repa- replacing or repairing bridges.
No, for the off-system bridge programs, what the county is involved with, the federal, it's a federal program. The federal government pays eighty percent of the total cost of the bridge project.
Okay.
State pays ten percent and the county can either pay ten percent of the total cost or do equal share in in-kind services that the, of what we're doing.
So how does this one work that we're assuming we, we're paying twenty-five percent?
I, I don't know if, I don't know if the, for the, the state with the off-system bridge program or the federal government, if they would consider that.
Don't get me wrong, I'm pleased to confirm that FEMA asked to pick up seventy-five percent of the cost or possibly more, it sounds like, from Commissioner Jones, but.
I don't know how that.
I'm just trying to understand, where's, where's the TaxDOT component in this?
And Tracy, if, if it comes in at that five point eight five five million, what's our in-kind looking like donation wise? Okay. Okay. I hate to put you on the spot here, I was, I knew you were sitting there though, so I'm gonna ask.
It's what you get for attending this.
If you see how that works, I'm kind of curious and I just have no.
I don't know their exact terminology, but basically they're talking about front loading the money on it is what they're talking about, through a rapid.
I'm talking about the donated.
Oh, the donated.
Do that, does that mean they're gonna pick up one hundred percent of the cost? Because we get to count our.
We'll get to count, we will get to count our donated hours towards our twenty-five percent. All that in-kind, is that correct, Tracy?
From what I can see, our donated hours and any donated services.
Yeah, equipment or whatever.
Right.
Whatever we claim.
I do have some invoices for, for engineering services that you know.
Right. Well, that's what I had, so I don't know where you guys are.
Well, I've, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I guess I am a little bit more comfortable going into the reserve. This is not the time to raise taxes on, on people that are already stressed. So, I, I know we're worried about next year and even the year beyond, but I don't think we should let fear drive our decisions. We always over budget and we have a much higher reserve left than we estimated at the start of the year. And I actually think we'll, we'll be okay. I'd like to keep, see it, you know, twenty percent or above, but I don't see any magic in twenty-three point two or for that matter, twenty-five.
Judge, if we went at, at point four oh two four.
The no new revenue rate?
Right, the no new revenue rate. How badly would that affect us going into next year?
Well, my, my understanding is that it lowers revenue by one point two million. Is what Bob Reeves told us last time.
One point what?
One point two.
You're, you're, you're lowering the rate two cents. And one cent equals about six fifty.
Right.
So two cents would be about one point three.
I thought I heard him say one point two, but anyway.
Well, it would be.
Plus or minus.
Well, that's about what he just said, though.
Yeah. Yeah, well, he said six fifty. I thought it was six hundred that I heard, but he might have better ears.
Okay.
So it's about the same, whether it's one point two or one point three. You just saved us at least that much, so.
I didn't save anything.
Well, you've shown the possibility of, of costs coming down by at least that much.
You know, few, first few days of it, a week into it, whatever, I don't know. It's been a blur. But I was thinking about the budget and what have you and devastation and what was always gonna be our place as far as roads, bridges and all kinds of things. And I think I mentioned it the other day to some people that, back then, just shooting from the hip, I thought, man, if, if there was any way, and this is when people were thinking we were going to eight percent and all that kind of stuff, which is crazy, never was even considered. But I thought, man, if we could land this plane at the same tax rate we had last year, it would be a slight increase on people. Then I'd be tickled to death. And then fast forward, here we are, you know, five or six weeks into it, and there's a chance we could do, go with the no new revenue rate, which is, you know, and I think most people out there would think is a home run if we could do either one of them. I am concerned about next year. And I'm not afraid to go with no new revenue rate.
My, my feelings are, if we go with no new revenue, then, and, and, and all of this doesn't fall perfectly into place, we will have a tax increase next year.
Oh, yes.
Well, we may, we may not. I'm not gonna jump to that conclusion.
Well, you may not, but I, I know, I don't wanna see the county go belly up either. Over a couple of cents.
Lot more pieces of the puzzle that.
Yeah. One point two or one point three million.
I'm not condemning or saying we're gonna go up. I'm just telling you, realistically, we're probably going to, if everything doesn't land perfectly.
Look, you know, as much as people have been beating the drum that we've been hammering on taxes, I think we've proven that that's not the case. The first year, the judge and I were sitting up here, we went with the, the tax rate from the year before, okay? And then look what we've done. People's tax rate has gone down, down, down the whole time, other than the bond year. And, you know, if I, you know, when I first took office, if you had told me we'd been able to do that six years in, I would have laughed. There's no way you could do that without rates of taxes. But we've done a good job of it. And the people before us have been very conservative and we've kept the tax rate down. And I had, I had lunch with a couple gentlemen yesterday and after the statement a couple weeks ago in, in here, they looked at theirs and said, you're right, ours has gone down in the last few years, you know? That's a fact. We've been conservative. We, we've done a good job. People cry about us giving the two percent raise or whatever. Doggone it, these employees deserve it. They deserve more than that. So whichever, I'm flexible, guys. I can go either way with this.
Well, reality is, if, if the tax rate, if we have a real problem with it, you're faced, next year, you're either gonna go up or you're gonna lay people off.
Yeah.
That's, that's reality.
Right.
Kinda. Because governmental functions that we have to perform.
Right.
We have to provide.
I know.
Doesn't matter how we do it.
Yeah.
The challenge is, if the budget is set, it's controls over the execution of the budget. A good thing is that we talk about money every single time we do Commissioners' Court and there's budget adjustments that go along with it. But if we have a lot of good ideas over the next execution of a year, hard nos have to come from this court. Like, I think it's a good idea to have low water crossing gates and low water crossing signs. That's not a part of her budget. That's not factored in.
Right.
So we're either gonna have to be really resourceful and find other money to do some of these good ideas because it can't come from our budget.
You're right.
And we're gonna have to really do good research and pay attention to all the budget adjustments that come every single court.
Yep.
Because we're stuck with a very tight budget. And, yeah, it's gonna be old furniture in the animal control building, okay? We know that we can't get everything we want at Hill Country Youth Event Center. Even a future EOC, sounds like a great idea with, with server rooms and closets, but we're on a very tight budget, especially when we're digging into reserves. So we have to be mindful of that and be remembered by this. Because once we're stuck with it, we're not generating additional.
No, that's right.
Stuff.
Yep.
But historically, we always underspend the budget.
This is, this is, this is an abnormal.
This is a historic year.
I realize that.
Abnormal time.
This is gonna be historic in our future.
But what I'm trying to tell you is, if we went with a no new revenue rate, that one point two or one point three million dollars is not gonna burden the county. And I think it just sends all the right message to the people that have already been hurt so badly that we're not trying to screw them on top of everything that already been.
No one's screwing anybody.
There are people that have been saying that, so anyway, I'm just trying to make a point.
Well.
That didn't make it true. I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
No one up here, and in fact, no one up here would ever do that, but I still say we, we send all the right message.
To everyone in the county, if we can at least keep it at the no new revenue rate, I don't believe that that one point two million dollars makes much of a difference.
I'm more concerned about doing the right thing than I am the message that we send.
Well.
And the right thing is to perform our governmental functions. And to do that, we're talking about spending over forty percent of our savings for one year. That's what we're talking about doing.
Yeah. That's what it was for.
I would say the decision on one point two or one point three million dollars is not gonna impair our ability to do the government functions. I agree with Commissioner Holt. We're gonna have to be very judicious, watch every expenditure very closely, tighten the belt and learn to say no to some things. I believe that this court is capable of doing that.
How many open positions do we have in the budget? Do you know that people are gonna be trying to fill? Any idea?
How many open positions we have right now?
I, I don't have a number.
Yeah.
Are there quite?
Kelly has at least seven, two, three, seven.
Yeah.
And how are you able to function without them?
That's for sure.
Well, I mean, are we still doing what we're supposed to do in this county without them? Or are we falling way behind?
We're falling behind on the seal code.
Work together and kind of have to change it up a little bit, but I think we still have a pretty good job because how long we've done, so it's gonna be best to prepare.
Do we have any seal coating plan for this upcoming year? Didn't we strike a bunch of that out of the budget?
Well, we're gonna kind of see how things, things go because we've got a lot of guard rail out there that must be replaced.
Correct.
The, the road damage that we've got, I would say is horrendous. There is some road damage, there is some road. So, you know, I think our main thing is getting that guard rail put back in place. Some of the guard rails obsolete and making.
Well, do we anticipate contracting most of that or?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the guard rail cost again? I remember you told me, Kelly, and I.
We estimated that for.
Per foot.
Locations that we have, that we'd probably be looking at maybe five hundred thousand, six hundred from there at most, but we thought probably about five hundred.
Total?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be a FEMA item.
Right. Is that, is that what you figured into this? Was about that or was it higher?
No, I'm just going back and I don't think there's anything in there for guard rails. I was looking at something that had a list of the loads. What I was looking at is when y'all gave me the changes that y'all made and UCSD plan fifteen, we make the guard rails be fifteen thousand, maybe that's the two hundred thousand.
Well, that was off of what their normal budget would be.
Right, that was the norm.
That was not, that was not the damaged.
Budget being at fifty thousand or we're going zero and, or will the big guard rails that aren't being, that we know you're, that you're gonna use? I guess is the question.
Yeah, I think that was gonna be work performed by, by our road and bridge and we, we cut that way back. Yeah, that wouldn't be included with the other, but.
I know when, when Donnie and I went out with Tina.
Kelly, why don't you go to the microphone?
To kind of do the first round of stuff, we came up with, I wanna say the total was eight million, eight point five, but that was figuring six million on Cade Loop.
Right.
And that was figuring high. So, a few roads, we've got like seven locations. And some are guard rail and some spalling on the concrete of the bridges. And then we've got three roads that have got some damage to them. The, the main stuff other than Cade Loop Bridge for us, the most expense is the guard rail.
Kelly, you had figured in eight point five, you think, for all of it?
That when we did that P stat in the very, very beginning, but that was figuring, we had asked Charlie on Cade Loop and, you know, I kind of was thinking about five million and Charlie said, let's put six million in. And I think that was for a total replacement, but, I mean, it was a high number, so obviously, and I think.
Well, that's, that's kind of my point. Everything we're figuring, intentionally it should be.
Yes.
I agree, I don't disagree with you, Tanya, on that, but we've got that number pretty high from where it would need to be.
To me, the most important thing other than Cade Loop Bridge is getting the guard rails.
Right.
Repaired on those bridges, the ones that.
Right.
That need it. If worse came to worse and we had to absorb the cost of the road repairs, we probably could figure it out in our budget, but the guard rail is, is a big one. And other than the bridge, that's the next big one, is the guard rail.
Sure.
And like I said, I think Indian Creek and, I can't remember if it was Lane Valley, the guard rail that's out there is obsolete. They don't make it anymore, so it's not a matter of replacing the sections. They may have to replace all of it, you know? I don't know. But I know that two locations has an old style that is no longer manufactured anymore. It's back to back. You see the guard rail and they've got it back to back with one another. They don't make that anymore, so...
So, is the state legislature going to come through and give us some help with a flood warning system?
They can't even meet.
I know, that's different, but they will eventually. They'll keep calling a special session until they do.
Well...
But are they going to deliver on anything that actually helps us?
I want to believe we can find flood warning systems outside the budget.
Oh, yeah.
We already have large donors that are lined up that have offered to do direct donations to the county. And we have Ingram, which is already, City of Ingram, which has accepted three sirens.
Oh, yeah.
Two or four.
Good.
So, when you start talking about sirens in the city, I was thinking one siren per city. Ingram already has accepted three.
I haven't heard them have multiple ones, but anyway.
I mean, that's an important part of our growth from this, is sirens attached to USGS sensors.
Yeah.
And with the donors that are currently lined up, that's why I haven't been talking about it.
Okay.
Exactly.
No, we're all aware of that, but none of that's figured into this budget.
No, that, and it's not.
I understand it's not there, that's why I wanted to, if nothing else for the public to understand.
But the public demands it.
It's going to happen, I agree.
Yeah.
It's going to happen one way or the other.
Yeah.
There's about, there's, I think there's three, three different entities trying to outdo theirself and get it done.
Yeah.
But something will happen.
I agree it has to. Anything else on the budget?
The capital projects, we've got 2.7. I don't have, I should have brought my big book in. What all do you have on that?
What?
You brought your big book in, right?
Yeah.
We're showing 2.7, 2, 3 million on the capital project. I didn't bring that, I thought I brought everything in and I did not.
I'm sure I have my copy.
Just want to, just one more look at that. I don't know what's...
Fire department.
That's also other projects, that's not just the current year.
This what now?
It's not just the current year, the 2.7.
Okay.
It's finishing up some of the money from two other years. It also is where the Hill County, yes, and where that's where it's actually now. There's a little bit left over for the airport. It's all...
Okay. And what you explained to me was that the road and bridge stuff amounts to about $50,000 anyway, right?
And how it's...
On how much, you don't even look at really trying to remove any of the road and bridge equipment or anything, because that's, I mean, that's a big ticket item. But you said the way we have that set up, that wouldn't really affect the overall budget, right?
Or with the maintenance.
Now, in there, it's going to spend about $50,000, that's what that's going to cost us.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with, yeah, I'm good with that, yeah. Okay.
So, that under...
And there's also, you know, the air conditioners for the building, the tenure plan, that's factored into the loan amount. And there's a dishwasher for the jail that's factored in the loan amount, but jail body scanner is factored into the loan amount and a vehicle for due to renovation. That's all that's going to cost us.
Okay.
What's the airport, the 212,000, Al Mooney? Did you say we still owe some money on Al Mooney?
It's out there where...
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with the road project. I thought we already paid all of that, wasn't it 800,000 or 850, I forget?
We have not. That's not the road project.
Okay. So, that's the portion that you expect to pay next year?
Yeah. And so, that's just a lot of...
Okay.
I'm sure glad we capped our exposure on that.
You've answered all my questions. Thank you very much, all of y'all.
Anything else? Well, if not, then we'll adjourn.
Okay.